All right, good afternoon. We're back at it. I think we left off at, we're at Supervisor's comments now. And then after our comments, we can decide if, what we're gonna do.
Do we have to go with public comment after that again?
Okay. So, who would like to go first? I'll go first. All right, so here, my, right from day one, I have not changed my mind on what I think we should do. And I've been over it in my mind, I'll bet you a thousand times, because I feel that the sheriff's position is the most important position in the county. It's, it is the law of the people. It sets the law, it sets the policies for Sheriff's Department. And it's what people feel, it's how they feel safe and they feel represented. Safety is number one that the board here is supposed to be looking at when we, when we do our dealings. Safety is number one. And so, as a business owner, besides this job, as a business owner, I have had the opportunity to feel unsafe in the county. Because at one time, I mean, when we first started, when we first opened, in a seven year period, we got broke into 11 times at my restaurant. My house got broken into one time. So, I would say I'm a pretty good example of how we don't want to feel. And in the past few years, it's gotten better. We haven't had a break-in, I don't even wanna say this. We haven't had a break-in in probably three years. And that allows me to walk into my, my wife, to walk into the business in the morning and not worry about getting mugged or, you know, having a broken window to clean up or stuff thrown all over the place or, you know, food thrown all over our kitchen. And so, so for me, the position is all-important. And, and I want, personally, I want the absolute best candidate for the Sheriff's Department and for our people that we can get. I also want to make sure that the people feel that we're offering up the best possible candidate, the best possible sheriff. And we're lucky because we actually have some really good ones. So, so I gotta tell you that if we, if, if a person, it's just like, if a person is best at what they do, then they will get the position. So, my suggestion in a nutshell is, is my, my proposal gives the opportunity for all interested candidates to apply and go through the process equally. It gives the people a chance to be a part of the process and it gives the board an opportunity to choose the best sheriff. So, this is just a suggestion from me, it's the board that's gonna make that decision, whatever that is. In my opinion, the board cannot take the easy route and just appoint who, who we may know. Even though we think we have the best candidate, we have to remember, we are appointing a Calveras County Sheriff. No easy task. And I feel the people deserve a well-thought-out process. Hiring the best sheriff will take time and some money. On Tuesday, or today, I would like to delegate the task of forming an interviewing committee through two of our board members. I would like to suggest Mike Supervisor Olivera and Supervisor Wright. The CAO will provide any needed assistance to carry out the processes to decide by the board, which includes HR. The board committee members, with the help of CAO, will hire a recruiting firm to do a thorough recruitment, including a background check, to bring forward the best qualified candidates. All applications will be forwarded, vetted through, through Mike and Chris as well. Also, I would like, ask that Mike and Chris select at least three current or former sheriffs from rural counties to serve as an interview committee, to rank candidates. I would like to ask, there's a couple of people, Charlie's actually one of them, that we could ask, but somebody as a facilitator, somebody, a retired sheriff, that's not connected as a facilitator, but not a voting person. The person that I was recommended to for that was Mark Pace, who works for OES. He's a retired sheriff. He was a sheriff at Merced County, two terms. And he also, I think, was state chair of the Sheriff's Association. The committee will select, will bring it down to the shortlist, basically. So, out of the finalists, and I have two finalists, you know, I mean, it could be three, whatever comes out of it. I can't see us having too many because of the requirements. I would like, let's see, of the finalists, we'd have, I'd like to have at least two public meetings where the public can come in and ask questions and find out who they And it could be in a debate format, but I would call it a special meeting where the board is there, because I want it to be a special meeting so we could see too, although we wouldn't participate. We would just sit there and listen. We could have a moderator to do the, you know, just kinda do the meeting. And then, I think after that, we would have a really good indication of who, who our sheriff should be. And then the board can make us an appointment. So, if we want the best possible sheriff for the people of Calveras County, so no restrictions on them running in the future with work through requirements, I wish to, to delegate most of this to board members, because I don't wanna have this, I don't wanna be hogging the show, basically. I would like, these folks here, they're kinda polar opposites in the political spectrum and I think that they both would make a very good decision on who, who we could pick. So, so, I know that it would take a while for this process to go through, but, so with an election. So, that's, that's my suggestion. It's up to the board to choose. I have no idea, but that's my suggestion. I know it's probably a little different than everybody was thinking, but, you know, could be that the top two candidates are sitting right in this room right now, which would be great, as far as I'm concerned. So, my goal, my goal, in my mind, is, is to make sure that we have, we have an opportunity to choose the very best that's, that's available and, you know, give that to our Sheriff's Department so that they can, they can move forward.
Well, one thing that I, and I do appreciate and respect Sergeant DiVincilio's statement. I wanna make very sure that if serving, ranking law enforcement officer in our Sheriff's Department were to apply for this, if we appointed him, that they can go back. I'm very, very concerned about that. I don't want anybody's career to be disrupted.
J.D. Hawkins, HR Director. During the lunch break, county council, myself and DSA president reviewed the MOU and the rules regarding bumping. And the rules regarding bumping only go into effect in a layoff situation. In the case of an appointment, that's not a layoff situation, the officer would be giving up his position and so he would not be able to bump back into his position.
Kim, we write an MOU that safeguards them. And I don't even know if any of them want to, to go for it. It's a big step, but I do know there is a perception that, that some would not go for it because they don't wanna disrupt their career plans, even though they wanna help the county out.
That's something I can't say yes or no to. We would have to, you know, with, I'd have to meet with county council, we would have to meet with the DSA to discuss that.
The MOU change won't do anything because the government, the rules are under the county code.
Excuse me.
The MOU does not apply to this situation.
So, identify yourself.
Identify yourself so everybody knows who you are.
David, Sirius, Council's office. You understand, the MOU does not apply. None of the MOUs apply, only the county code. So, you have to change the county code, because the county code makes bumping and reinstating employees only, not officers.
So, once you, once you accept the position or become the elected official, you get elected official.
You're an elected official and you better be sure that you wanna run again or you wanna retire.
Well, thanks for getting that information.
Yeah, I do appreciate it. Thanks for clearing it up.
All right, any other questions by the board?
Steve, were you finished or?
Well, Cliff really brought this forward and I, and he's also telling us what he's bringing forward. And so, I kinda wanna almost respond to the things that he has said. Delegate the task to forming an interviewing committee through the two of our board members, Mike and Chris. I don't have a problem with that. They do have very different philosophies and if they're willing to do it, I would go for it. I, I wonder if there shouldn't be a citizen member or two on that committee, but maybe with the sensitivities of the personnel issues, I don't know. The board committee members, with the help of the CAO, will hire a recruiting firm to do a thorough recruitment, including a background check, to bring forward the best qualified candidates. All applicants will be forwarded, Mike and Chris. I don't know if we need to do that.
Do what?
Hire a recruiting firm.
Yeah, maybe not.
There are, there are so many people that have said they want the job to me.
But, but the reason I said that is, I don't know if it's a recruiting firm, but if we're gonna have a sheriff, a candidate come in here, I, we're gonna have to go through, in my mind, we should go through a background check. And the reason is, is because if we hire somebody.
We appoint somebody.
Shouldn't they be able, shouldn't it be a requirement that they, they were able to be hired at, anywhere, at a different place, at a different, at a different Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, and I understand where you're getting at, but could our, do we need to hire a recruitment firm to do that? Cliff, maybe we can have somebody do a background checks in-house or, or is that even what you can do to somebody who's, they're serving as an elected candidate? And Megan's looking at me, so I think she's got something to say, so I'll let her.
Can we require a background check?
The minimum requirements are set out by statute, so those are the minimum requirements for the position. I don't believe that we necessarily have to, it appears, David, he is our personnel attorney, so he might have some additional insight into this specific topic.
You don't have, David Sirius, you don't have to do a background check, but industry practice is to do a background check, because you, this is the chief law enforcement officer of the jurisdiction and you wanna make sure that, say, he comes from Florida or some other jurisdiction, he hasn't got into some kind of mischief or something like that, which you wouldn't uncover unless you did a background check, so.
But they're serving as an elected official, basically, David. I mean, I'm trusting what you're telling me, but I guess that's my question.
Yes, but you don't legally have to do a background check on the elected official, but industry practice is that you do, for risk, for risk management purposes.
I mean, if I'm gonna hire the, the most highest position in the county, I would certainly think that would be a requirement.
If the sheriff in California is a law enforcement officer, I think they're required to a background check, other than the fact that he's an elected official. And necessarily don't have to be a peace officer at the time of the election. We saw that recently in San Francisco, where somebody with no law enforcement experience whatsoever, or any credentials from post or anything, was elected sheriff. That's a good question.
I was just throwing that out there.
I don't have a problem with doing a background check, as long as that's legal and appropriate and.
I would, I would concur with Supervisor Currie, yeah. Definitely. If we can do it legally, I would highly, highly encourage a background check.
As far as the two finalists that stand before, at least two public meetings. Optimum would be one meeting in each district where the public can meet them and ask questions. I know that's trying to get the public involved in the hiring process. If that can be worked out, I'm, I'm good with it, but that, that sounds like a pretty tall order. And the board can make a selection for appointment, I think it's, I think we have to do that and we have to progress forward in making the appointment, so. Hopefully, did I clear my, how I feel about this proposal?
Pretty good. I mean, it's close.
Yeah.
So, as I understand it, if we have someone that is currently a member of the Sheriff's Department elects to apply for this position and that person is selected to be the, want to use a better term, interim sheriff, and he elects not to run for election at the end of the term of three years, then he is just a private citizen with no employment retention. Am I correct there?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, when, when the board makes the appointment, the appointee is not an interim sheriff, they are the sheriff.
The sheriff.
Acting as if they were an elected position. It is not a position appointed through the board.
So, if he elects not, if he elects not to run for election in 2018, he's just a normal citizen.
They don't, in other words, they won't have their position to come back to.
Right. Is there any way contractually, we can make that position available to them?
It's my understanding that you would have to make a modification to the code. Correct me if, that's my understanding from what Mr. Sirius indicated, that it's pursuant to our code. So, if the board wanted or wished or directed staff to modify our code provisions to allow for it, that is something that staff could bring forward.
I'm done Supervisor Bonney, answer your question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, in my opinion, what I've observed today is I think we're making this way more complicated than it needs to be. I think the board direction several months ago was to give it the 120 days and if there was anybody internally interested and qualified, we needed to know that. I don't know where we are in that decision. Are we going to pursue that or are we just going to say, thank you very much for doing that, but we're going on a different route? I don't like a committee. I don't think we need to use a recruiter. I think we need to do our job. We need to make up whatever qualifications we want in this position, either fill it in-house, excuse me, go out of the department and within our community. Do we wanna recruit outside of our committee, community? You know, what do we want to do? And to be able to internally recruit, you might say, using our HR department in having candidates come forward. I don't think we can require candidates to have a background check. Perhaps when we have our number one candidate that we have voted on and agreed to, then perhaps at that time, we can say, you know, pending a background check, we're offering you this position per se. But I, I don't think to have all of these candidates present a background check is all that necessary at this time, nor do I think we need the expense of an outside recruitment firm, nor do I think we delegate this selection process to being bored to the community by two individual board members. So, I would like my first kinda question go back to, we went through this exercise, you might say, of HR, looking at internally who might qualify, and here we are with two candidates, that's my understanding, that qualify. So, what are we gonna do with that? Are we going to acknowledge that and say, great, let's set up an interview process for these two? Or are we gonna say, you know, thank you very much, we're not quite sure if that's the way we wanna go and we're gonna recruit all over the place?
Well, my, my comments on that, first of all, we didn't ask HR to do any interviews or any recruitment. That's not what we asked.
No, we didn't. We asked them to see within the chain of command who would qualify.
No, we asked them to accept candidates from the Sheriff's Department. That's it. That's it.
Well, it depends on.
I beg to differ, we might have to go get that tape.
Actually, I looked at the tape at lunchtime and it was on the direction of the board to determine interest from candidates that were listed in the policies and procedures in the chain of command. I did watch it at lunchtime.
What was it? Say it again.
I watched it at lunchtime because I was not here for this board meeting, so I was just curious, because I was asked if I, what I recalled, and I said I was not here. So, I went back and looked at it and it was the direction of the board, after quite a bit of discussion, to request whether, for HR to determine the people that were interested in the chain of command as written in the sheriff's policies and procedures.
I, I honestly don't know. If there were a way we could see the tape, I'd really be happy. I know, I'm trying to think.
Replay booth, can we go?
Yeah, I had a request the other day, so.
It took a while to find.
So, I guess the question is, is how do we move forward? We're not, you know, we can make decisions today if we want to, but the original date is February 9th. February 9th is when, when we're supposed to make the date. This is just letting it all out. We'll get to the, if we want to wait until then, we can, or we could do it, decide on a process today.
Yeah, and, and from my standpoint, I appreciate, you know, your thoughts on that. I think that, you know, there's some good thoughts of trying to be inclusive. I, I would suggest that if we were gonna pursue that, that Debbie would be in my place instead of me. That, that's for sure. She has a, you know, I think, would be in a better position to, to make that choice. So, I would, that's the, if we were gonna pursue that, I would definitely withdraw my name from that committee and ask the board to accept Debbie, if she wanted to do it. She doesn't look like she wants to do either, but, but I don't know. But I, I think that, I mean, really, I, as much as I do appreciate the, the effort behind that, I do think we have two qualified candidates in the room. What I would like to do is, is bring them back, do an interview process with these two individuals and then make a decision, just with the board and, you know, public comment and stuff, but with one of those, one of those two, you know, I think that's the, the best solution. Keep things moving along, make a decision and, and then hold down the fort until the next election. So, that would be my proposal. That's how I'd like to see it.
Sure. I, my views on it, I, I'm convinced that we have to fill this position from within the Sheriff's Department. I don't think we're gonna be able to go outside and find the caliber of person with the requirements of past experience, past knowledge of how unique this county is, especially the Sheriff's And I do have an issue with proper notification to anybody in the Sheriff's Department that the opportunity is available. I know we discussed this, I, I'm just not convinced that we did the best job notifying everybody of that desire to come forth and talk to us, indicating they want, they want this position. If we could do, make that notification and, and get those candidates, if any, maybe there isn't any, then I, I would recommend going along and getting the selection process going.
Just internally?
Internally, yes.
Just for clarification purposes, are you referring to anybody in the Sheriff's Office that would meet the minimum requirements or just the employee, or just the individuals who are listed on the succession plan of the sheriff's policy manual?
Could you run by the positions on the succession plan? Because I would, I would lean towards that, I just wanna make sure we're talking apples and apples.
In the succession plan, the first is Operations Bureau Commander, followed by Custody Bureau Commander, followed by Operations Division Commander, Special Operations Division Commander, followed by Deputy Sergeant.
I'm sorry, Deputy Sergeant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Those positions.
Just those positions.
Just those positions in the succession plan?
That, that's what we did. We didn't open it to everybody in the department. The direction given was those in that succession plan and that's what HR did.
Okay.
So, do we stop it there?
How did we do that? That's my question.
Did I say deputy, I said duty sergeant, did I?
You said deputies.
I apologize, I, I meant to say duty sergeant. I don't know if, I don't know if there's a difference between a duty sergeant or a deputy sergeant, but in the succession plan, it is a duty sergeant.
Duty sergeant.
Yes.
Within the command of the Sheriff's Office, a duty sergeant will refer to the administrative sergeant and then on down through the chain of command with the, the next senior sergeants, the senior corporals, to the, the senior deputies, down to the guy we hired two weeks ago.
Captain, does that include all sergeants or just the admin sergeant?
Well, the succession plan just goes to the admin sergeant.
Okay.
Okay? Beyond that, chain of command follows down through. Beyond that, chain of command follows, uh, down through. Can I answer that?
Please correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Ballard, but my notes from last meeting were, um, Operations Bureau Commander is Captain Macedo, Custody's Bureau Commander is Captain Ballard, Operations Division, um, Commander is Lieutenant Hewitt, Operations, uh, Special Operations Division Commander is Hubbardie, and Duty Sergeant is Sturm. Is that correct?
No, um, because between the time that that policy and procedure was put in place, um, till now, we've created that new lieutenant's position in the jail. So now you have the jail commander, so you would have an additional lieutenant on there. Or did you say that? Start on, what did you have on this?
That's why I was questioning it.
Lieutenant Sturm is, um, is the, is in the jail.
Custody, uh, Cust- Lieutenant Jail Commander.
That was my understanding, but my notes indicate that he was the person under the duty sergeant of the, um, of the policy. That's why I wanted clarification.
Yeah. Well, since we did his position, we haven't redone the policy.
So is there a duty sergeant position?
Well, a duty sergeant, the duty sergeant position, Jim could correct me if I'm wrong, but the duty position sergeant is going to be whoever is the sergeant on duty that day. So that's the duty sergeant.
So it rotates?
Yeah, so if you started today, it would be a different sergeant tomorrow, and so on and so forth.
So that might include most everybody in the department?
It could.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are your patrol sergeants, right?
Yes.
Okay, so anybody that works patrol sergeant above?
Yes.
To an extent.
To an extent, that would be...
Name lieutenants, captains are here.
Yeah, say, say something happened to all of us in administration, and all the, you know, something happened to us, then, you know, probably the succession would be the senior sergeant of the department would then take over, and so on and so forth.
Good afternoon. Jim Macedo, uh, captain of the sheriff's office. I can tell by the look on your faces, this is not easy, and it's not, and I don't envy you, uh, at all having to make this decision. I, I'm going to make a suggestion, and please take it, uh, just as that, as it relates to your selection process. I think you do need to have some sort of scoping meeting. Uh, I would strongly suggest that you get Human Resources involved in that, in that scoping meeting. County Council's going to need to play a role in that. Uh, and the reason I say this, I, I've received a lot of questions from internal staff. There's been a lot of confusion about qualifications and who's involved, and who's not involved, and who's eligible and who's not eligible. And I know there's some documents that have been sent out, and I know there was a previous board meeting. Um, I, I think you can handle this with professionalism and class by having just a series of three scoping meetings. I'm not going to tell you how to comprise your committees, that is entirely up to all of you. But I think by having those three meetings, you can narrow that down, whether you do it with the public or internally, is again, uh, up to your discretion. I do think, though, to avoid miscommunication and lack of clarification, that you absolutely have to get your parameters set down of who is eligible and what it is you are looking for. And I think Hu- Human Resources can help guide the process by doing that. Um, I, I clearly heard you Supervisor Olivera about, um, whether we, we want to look back into the agency and make sure we, we have recontacted anybody that may want to be eligible. The comments that came up about the ability to bounce back, uh, the ability to retain employment after becoming the sheriff, um, those questions weren't answered before today. Uh, they really have been kind of answered verbally, but there's been no documentation that a potential candidate, and I'm not saying this is me, by the way, but that somebody else within our organization may want to look at, uh, to be able to vet before they make such a, a career, uh, serious decision, for lack of a better term. So I would suggest that HR and County Council lay this out on paper, then you submit that out. That way, everybody is completely clear and knows the risks versus the rewards of what they're getting into. And with regard to the background, again, that's also up, uh, you know, up to the board's, uh, decision. Uh, I do agree that it should be, you know, it should be one background, not having people put their background out front. It, it should be an application process, you make your decision. And then if you do decide to do a background, then it's directed towards your, your potential, uh, your potential candidate. That is a little unusual, I will tell you. And there was a comment made earlier about precedent in the county. As you know, uh, the former district attorney did pass away, uh, and Ms. Yook, who is the current district attorney, did, uh, take over that office, and, uh, council or, uh, even the CAO's office could talk to you guys about, uh, what that process was like. I don't think anybody was on the board, uh, when that occurred. But there is somewhat, if you're looking on what to do between now and then, there is, was one precedent set or one experience that the county went through at that time. And Ms. Yook, uh, actually, uh, reached out to me after the sheriff's death and told me about, uh, you know, what she experienced during that process. So she may be somebody you, you may want to speak to as well.
Captain, would you have it just be internal?
Uh, you know, Supervisor Wright, with all due respect, uh, I don't want to taint the process, I really don't. Uh, and my conversations about this, uh, are going to remain private, uh, about this process. Uh, you'll have to forgive me, I've been gone for a long time, been through a lot. And, uh, I do want you to know, I support the candidates and the guys I work with. Um, and I, I am a little concerned about seeing them go through a public process where they have to kind of expose themselves. You know, I just want to akin this to a police chief's job. There's a lot of private things that get done when you're appointed a police chief. And, uh, um, I, I understand the Department Office of the Sheriff, I understand the need for transparency, I understand the Brown Act, but me, I'm having some difficulty, knowing some fellow staff that I'm going to work with is going to have to expose stuff, private stuff, out into the public, uh, and what could potentially be a disorganized, unprofessional, chaotic situation. Uh, I don't support that. I want this to be handled with class, uh, and professionalism and all the dignity that, that the Office of the Sheriff really needs to hold. Um, so I, I am a little concerned about watching guys I worked with for a long time, uh, go through that process.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay. I, I tend to agree with the scoping meeting comment, uh, with HR involved and, uh, County Council. I really wish that one of these supervisors would do it, though, uh, with Mike, to get, uh, you know, everybody's views in there before they bring it to the board. Uh, I, I do think, uh, a clear posting, uh, of every parameter needs to be done to the, everybody who's qualified, uh, on that list. And that they understand the, what do you call it, bounce back or bump? The bump, uh, uh, lack of it, or, you know, if we're not able to do that, they need to understand that. So if we, if a, uh, every candidate needs to be able to apply that is interested. And I do agree with creating, uh, committees to examine them before they get to the full board. I think that's fair to the candidates, the... And it, and, uh, we need to give them time to do the applications also. If we were posting for a, uh, department position with, uh, headhunting type firm, they would, they would take many months to get those applications in, to us, it seems. So at least, uh, give people a time to contemplate, uh, whether they want to jump into the deep end doing this. That's my thought.
All right. So where are we? How do you understand it?
Well, let's take it a question at a time. Do we want to do a internal only, um, recruitment, for lack of a better word? Or do you want to do both internal and external?
So we'll ask that question, Debbie?
You know, I, I struggle with that because I've, um, you know, I have a lot of constituents calling, and it's kind of a fifty-fifty kind of discussion about external or internal. So I think at this point, the question, I would say both.
So we can decide on the ninth, if it was going to be one or the other?
Yeah, I mean, for discussion purposes right now. I, and I, when I talk about external, I really look at somebody who is already residing...
Well, they have to be.
In Calvers County. Well, but the code says that they can be relocate once they receive the position.
They have, they have to be a resident of the county by the time they take, they, they are sworn into the office. So if they're not a, a resident currently, at the time of appointment, by the time they, by the time they get sworn in, as long as they, uh, meet that requirement, that is fine.
Okay.
But they do have to ultimately meet that requirement prior to taking office.
Mike?
I, I, I will agree with the vetting committee portion of this.
No, we're just talking about, uh, internal or external?
I, I remain internal. Remain internal only.
Steve?
For this position, and, excuse me a minute, just going to finish. Elections have a place. This is not a place for an election, although I would love to have it be an election.
Okay.
This is an appointment. So in internal, I think we have to go with, uh, what we've been doing historically with that department.
Okay.
I thi- I think in the, be it good, right, or bad, in October, we gave the impression that it was an open invitation to apply. I, I mean, I would, would like to think that, uh, the best person's going to get it. And I know every board member here has probably received the same inquiries I have. I would open it up to everybody applying, because frankly, they've already done it and, uh, by sending in their resumes, or at least initiated the process. To step on them now is sort of like pulling the rug out from underneath them. So I would go for both at this point.
Okay. Chris?
Internal.
And I am sticking with my original thought that, uh, and, um, like what Debbie said, that we can, um, open it up, internal, external, um, and we can have that discussion on tonight.
So what I'm hearing is three to two, that you will open it up to both external and internal candidates.
Yes.
The next question is...
External to me, though, is they reside already in Calvers County. That's what external means to me.
That's how I feel, too.
Uh, even though the code says differently.
I would just want to make sure that, that the direction is clear. If the board as a whole only wants to consider existing, the people that, that meet the requirements today versus, um, could ultimately be, become eligible by relocating.
Right.
That needs to be clear to staff.
That's why I...
That is very clear in my mind. How about yours?
That's why I mention it, yes.
Current county residents.
Yes.
Current, I mean, they currently reside in the county.
Yes.
They currently meet all of this, all of the statutory requirements of the office.
Because they also have to be a registered voter.
Yep. That's a requirement. Does the board want to use a professional recruiter, or do you want to, um, have HR do the recruitment?
I go for HR.
I kind of like the idea of, uh, to start, um, having, uh, a committee. And I'm good with Debbie on that committee with Mike, so that's...
Yeah, no, I'm definitely good with that.
But before we... Uh, uh, if the board will, excuse me, before we get to the committee, do you want to use, to put the word out, a professional recruiter, or do you want to use HR?
HR.
HR. I don't think we need to do that, yeah.
Mike, what is it?
I'm against the professional. I'm against, yeah, I'm against the professional recruiter.
Okay, so HR will be doing the recruitment. And then you want to develop an ad hoc committee, basically, or a committee, um, to review the, um, applicants, uh, applications, uh, and that will include two board members, County Council, the CAO, and HR Director?
No.
Well, I, I'm trying to figure out what that committee is going to look like.
Well, I'd like to know, I, I don't have any interest in a committee. I, I think this can be vetted through our public forum right here. I mean, if we want public involvement, that's the way we get it.
If you have, then if you have six, uh, candidates, you want all six candidates to, um, be vetted in the public forum at a board meeting?
Yeah, because really, a board meeting is going to be the least of their worries if they get to be selected sheriff. So we're just giving them all really good practice, and there's not two board members who say, "Gosh, I really like that one, why didn't you pick that one?", and so on and so forth. So I would vet it right here, public meeting.
Actually, it wasn't the board members, uh, that would pick them. It was the, uh, board members that were going to pick the, the, uh, the three, um, sher- uh, acting or retired sheriffs from somewhere else to be a selection group. And the reason I thought that is because, um, they, those folks know what a sheriff does, you know? And, um, they could probably pick out stuff that I wouldn't even know anything about. So, um, the, the caveat would be to make sure that, that they're from a rural county, but not connected. And then that way, it's a, it's a fair and impartial, uh, group that could make, that could, uh, give us a shortlist. We may already have a shortlist, by the way. But that's, was the reason for, um, for, for the choo- choosing the ad hoc, uh, committee from the board.
I just want to clarify things for the board. According to the board rules, an ad hoc committee is comprised solely of board members. Um, and so if you're looking, if you're looking to create an ad hoc committee, committee of solely board me- board members, it would just be, their, their function would to then create another committee, a selection committee? Just so I'm clear on what, what your direction, or what your recommendation is. So the only purpose that, that, that the ad hoc committee would be is to then create a subcommittee to select the candidates to bring forward to the board.
Yes.
Chair, I, I've got a question of Captain Macedo. When you, um, brought up scoping committees, elaborate on how you envision those, just to shade.
I, I just, I think you could handle it through kind of a three-meeting process. You could have, you know, somebody, a, a certain committee review what is submitted to you. A second committee, uh, actually go through a process with the candidate. And a third committee would be a, a decision-making committee. You could have that third committee be advisory to you, um, and then that would, you know, essentially be your fourth, uh, your fourth meeting, but I don't know that you need that many. Uh, I, I wouldn't have the committee necessarily interview everybody, because you may, I don't know what type of candidates you get, but you may go through there, and there may be some that just, you know, that you don't want, or you don't, don't qualify for whatever reason, or they're a bad decision or a bad fit. So that, that would be my suggestion to you. I wouldn't do it too long, but I wouldn't be it so short that you look like you made a, you know, a hasty decision on, on an important position. But I also don't think you need to drag it out, uh, to the extent that you're having, you know, committees and meetings to talk about meetings and committees. So, I mean, I could, I could draft some framework up for you, or you could use Human Resources. This framework is already in place when they utilize it for the process or selection for a police chief. Other entities have done that, uh, quite a bit. Um, albeit they kind of use a recruiting firm to, to thumb through the, the applications initially. But, um, there's already several processes in place, and if any of you have contacts with cities, and I'm sure Human Resources does, they could, uh, they could, you know, facilitate that, that for you. And I, I would, I would just also suggest, too, that you try and keep your committee small, because sometimes those groups get big and you can't come to a consensus.
Thank you. So where are we at?
So, I mean, that, that kind of brings it to point, because the reason I, I thought that two board members could do this and work with HR, um, we can't do the walk-in, they can do the, uh, connecting. You guys would just choose who's on that, on that committee to, to, you know, to, um, interview the candidates. You're not interviewing the candidates, you're just selecting, making sure that we have the right committee to do that. And, and that, and those are the experts, and that's, that's part of the process. The other part of the process becomes the public part of the process, which means that, um, we have our, um, community meetings. After that, we should probably have a pretty good idea on who the best candidate is.
And, uh, what's the timeframe?
Tell us then.
I mean, we have, right now, uh, I think that the, the public is probably, uh, just happy knowing that we have a process in place to get to where we're going to go. We already have Captain Macedo that is currently, um, doing what he's, he's doing what he's doing. So we're not disrupting that at all. It's, uh, everything runs until, until the selection time comes, and then, um, when that time comes, then we do. So it could be, you know, maybe two or three months. It's okay, I mean, it's okay, you know, we, should we be in a hurry to select the, the highest, you know, the most important position in the county? That's the question.
So let me, let me make sure that I know where we're at. We don't want a recruiting firm.
Correct.
We're going internal, external, and now we're on the, uh, how to select process. Okay? Uh, we want an initial, my, my thinking is you want an initial committee. Whether, whether you call it a committee or not, it's probably HR taking the applications is basically what I'm thinking, compiling up, and, uh, and they would have to work with County Council to make sure that we have told, uh... to make sure that we have told the applicants legitimately what the job is, and also a special statement to internal applicants of, you know, making comment on the bump process, so they do understand that. And after they've compiled all those, then there has to be some, another committee that screens.
That, that interviews. And then we have information.
And then it can be brought to the board. And that's the third, the board's the third, basically the third committee. So you need a second committee that screens, and who is that going to be compiled of?
That would be compiled, as I understand it, from the outside prior or existing law enforcement.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Chief of police, whatever.
Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Well, usually when you're screening the applications, you're just going through them to make sure that they have the qualifications that, for the job, and that everything that was required in the packet is there. Then the interviewing process, as I'm understanding it, would be with the three outside sheriffs, who would then rank those candidates that were deemed eligible through the screening process, and then the, the final selection being that of the board.
Yes.
And usually the screening process is done through HR.
I just feel it should be, I feel it should be somebody that is doing the job already and that knows the sheriff's duties in law enforcement.
I just, you know, my-
Be serious. I'm trying to encourage you not to overcomplicate this.
Mm-hmm.
There's a screening. It's a paper screening. The screen, the paper screening committee could be two board members and whoever you want, or it could just be the two board members. The paper screening is designed to screen the paper. There's no discretion. If they meet the qualifications, they get pushed forward. If they don't meet the qualifications on paper, they're rejected. Those, this is routine. Those, those applicants that go forward, then usually go to a separate, a separate committee, which could be the full board, or it could be another committee. You understand? Who does, who's actually interviewing the applicants? If it's the full board interviewing the applicants, that has to be in public. If you're doing a subcommittee to do a pre-screen interview, then technically, Megan, I mean, correct, that's, that technically doesn't have to be in public.
That's correct.
Because it's only two board members doing this, this initial-
That, or if the, if the board wanted to create a separate subcommittee that wasn't an ad hoc committee, but which is purely a selection committee that they were looking to get direction from, the outside sheriffs or, or police chiefs, they could, they could certainly do that, but ultimately, that would just be a recommendation to the board. The board would need to clarify, if you want all of the applicants that the, this committee reviews come to the board, or if you want that committee to vet it down to a select, fill in the number, top three, top five candidates to then come to the board for consideration. But the board would need to be clear on if it's all or specific number to direct that committee on, on what to bring forward.
It's pretty close, pretty close to, like, when we go hire, you know, one of the department heads we send out, it's very close to that.
It, it really does become a very similar process. The, the paper screening is usually done through HR to make sure they either meet the requirements or not, and those that do are moved forward to a basic interview by the-
By the committee that you guys choose.
By a committee, and, and then it goes to the board. The only difference with the appointed is that interview is done in closed session versus with this appointment, it would be an open session.
So I'm coming with two, well-
When you have the final, the finalists being interviewed by the board, that is an open session.
Correct.
Those resumes and applications are public record. The other applications are not public record, the ones that didn't go forward.
Right.
And when it comes time to actually interview, you talk to HR in our office, because there's a certain protocol when it comes to asking questions. There has to be a certain uniform, and you can't be asking certain people certain questions and other people other questions.
Here, we know the drill.
Yes. Thank you, David.
I guess, you know, again, I'm trying to keep it simple, and I heard a lot about public involvement. My experience goes back to the City of Angels. I think when I was on the city for eight years, there were three opportunities to hire a police chief, and we went through the initial paper screening process between HR and the admin office. They did the paper screening. They brought before the full board the however many applicants that made the paper screening. And it was a, a public process. At one point, they tried to do a subcommittee, and they invited police chief from Sonora, and the police chief from Jackson, and so on and so forth with the subcommittee. And in the end, the other three board members that weren't involved in the process questioned the applicants that were being brought forward. So at that point, that was the first time around, when that subcommittee was formed for the interview, to be presenting three, four candidates to the full board. It kind of blew up in our faces. So from that point on, we just utilized the paper screening process with HR and admin, and then the candidates were brought before the full, full board on a public forum. You know, maybe a little difference is, is the application is more public, but again, if they're putting their name out there to be sheriff, this board meeting, interview process is the least of their worries, in my opinion. So I would go for just a paper review process between HR and admin, and the rest of the candidates come before this board, and a public meeting process. That would be my, my suggestion.
I could still make it simpler, but I've already tried to do that multiple times. I guess I lost that one.
Why don't you say it again?
I think you guys all know, yeah. The two internal candidates we have right now that were in the room, just come before the board on the ninth, or whenever, we'll interview, we'll pick one. We'll be done.
Keep it simple. I was, once again, like, like to see the opportunity, if there is any interest by any other candidate internally, per our chain of command, make sure that that opportunity's been afforded to them.
Yeah, because we did get some new information here, so that could be different.
Yeah, that, that could be a-
Yeah, that's true.
Quite a, quite a decision to be made by somebody.
We already did that part.
The chain of command has been spoken to, right?
We already did that part, right?
Judy Hawkins, HR. I can, if directed by the board, send out a notification to those that do qualify with specific information regarding the qualifications and the rights of, you know, more information of what will happen if appointed to the position, and if they do not run for reelection, or if they do run for reelection and not elected, what will happen. So I can get more information out there with a deadline date, very specific information about contacting HR, so we can make sure that we've done everything to contact those in the sheriff's department, if, if that is something that you would like.
So, I, I need clarification here. We heard the chain of the command.
We, we, we chose external, internal, right?
Yes.
Right.
Three, two.
To me, that opens it wide open.
Yeah.
So we don't have to worry about the chain of command, really.
And, and the question Shirley posed to us is, what kind of committee structure, if any, are you want to have?
You know, and I'm okay with making it simpler, too, like you suggested. I'm good with that. You know?
Let HR screen and bring it to the board?
Yeah.
Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
I kind of like the idea of having some professional officers take a look at the candidates, but, you know? Because, you know, we have, when we, when we screen for-
Well, why don't we do this, then? Why don't we have part of the screening process? We have Captain Macedo here, who's part of the sheriff's department and is not in the running-
He's going to love that.
For that, but he's going to know qualifications on paper. I mean, that's all he's looking at, is a paper-qualified candidate moving forward.
In his defense, I think that puts a lot of pressure on him with going forward, that may be that-
I mean, by the time we get all of the information in, there's probably a couple of folks that we could reach out to that would be willing to do this, you know? I, I just, and I am concerned about, I, I would really like to have somebody that's, that's doing the job currently or retired from it, to, to just even paper screen it. Because they, you know, any of these officers right here can go out on a crime scene or anyplace else, I could go out there with them and look at it, they see way more than I do. They see things that I can't see. And so it's, I think it's important to be able to, to allow that to happen.
Chair Edson, I just wanted to clarify, the paper screening is not to determine the, the quality of the candidate, but just the sheer, looking at the, the minimum qualifications only, do they meet the minimum-
They could rank them.
Minimum qualifications.
They could rank them.
The paper screening is just, do they, do they move on to the next, to the next phase?
Okay, that's the paper screening, but the next phase is what I'm talking about, is that the, the interview process for, you know, so the people can, so that they can, just like if we were going to hire a, a department head, same thing. We get, you know, we get all these, they, we hire it out, they get all these applications in, they review them, and then they bring them to us, you know, they, they have a shortlist they bring to us, and they're the high, the highest qualified.
I just wanted to clarify, because you had indicated paper screening and this committee, and, and the committee is, would be, at least from what I'm hearing, is looking at the quality of the candidates and ranking them, where the paper screening is just purely ministerial.
Yes.
Paper screening would be qualified.
Purely, do they meet minimum qualifications, period?
Right.
And then we're, then I'm hearing, create a committee in between before they get to the board?
For ranking.
And I say no to that. I'm saying just come right to the board.
Okay.
I, I would go with a committee for ranking. If we're, we've opened it up not only internally but externally.
I, I would go with a committee also, and I'm going to tell you why. Because I, I'm very concerned, and, and yeah, becoming the sheriff is the least of the problems, I, I don't disagree with that comment, but you're also asking law enforcement people to put where they live on public record, and divulge family members maybe even, or references, and that is a concern for the, for these men and women that are wearing a uniform. So I would like to have a committee that gets it down to at least, you know, a minimum number of candidates.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that HR and admin will do the paper screening portion of it forward, the, anybody that meets the minimum qualifications to an interview committee, and the interview committee will be made up of rural sheriffs or, and/or police chiefs. Committee of three?
Yes. I would clarify, want a clarification. I don't think I would limit that to rural sheriffs.
Okay.
Retired or active law enforcement department heads or, if we get too constrictive on that, what if we don't find anybody? Maybe Captain Macedo-
I might be able to help you out with that, but I want to address something real quick. I would strongly suggest you stick with sheriff's offices, because it is a different business. You have the jail and civil side, and so I would strongly encourage you to stick with, with sheriff's offices, preferably one similar to Calaveras. That's not to say you can't have somebody from an area dissimilar, but the, the bulk should be from an area similar to Calaveras. And if you can't get sheriffs, because sheriffs are elected officials just like you, and they may not want to engage in politics outside their county, you may want to look at maybe command staff from other sheriff's offices. I could certainly try and help HR, but I just don't narrow yourself down so you have to reconvene just to change the composition of the, the committee.
Could you help HR, Tim?
If I'm asked to do so, I will, yes.
What do you guys think?
I would ask them to help HR.
I would agree.
Put together a professional staff that-
Only has to be three.
Okay, so committing to rank the candidates from similar size or type counties, either SOs or their command staffs, and Captain Macedo will assist HR in determining the composition of that committee.
And, and we need to ensure that there's no conflict of interest as well, as far as that committee.
Yes.
And no conflict.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Macedo.
Captain, thank you.
Okay, next question of the vetted candidates, would you want to, does the board want to interview the top three? Two? Five? So, so the committee will know, once it's brought forward, how many candidates will be coming to the board?
Well, right now, legitimately, we only have two, so I would say the top three.
I would agree.
We have inquiries, man.
What do you think, David?
I'm thinking five.
Five?
Five. Just like today.
What else is new?
I mean, you know, but we're here, but we're here to make sure that we get the best possible choice, right? So, fine, I'm good with five.
Two.
I, I'm good with five.
I'm good with two, internal candidates.
I'm good with three.
Do I hear?
How about?
Five.
Five, okay. I think we have a process in place.
How about, yeah, but I, I'm just thinking three to five.
Oh, three to five.
Well, when you serve on these committees sometimes, you know, you, sometimes it's, you have to stretch it to get the five, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a committee.
You know, the committee has that opportunity.
Are you talking about the committee, or how many, no, I think what Shirley is talking about is the amount of candidates that the committee-
Number of candidates.
That come forward.
To us.
All right.
To, I'm talking about the interview to us as a board.
Right. How many candidates?
Three to five candidates.
Three to five candidates.
To us as the board.
Okay. So we have a maximum of five and a minimum of three.
Okay.
How about a maximum of five, minimum of two? Because I know there's two already here.
Could be four.
Oh, Jesus.
So, five candidates, three to five candidates?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Three to five. Okay. Three to five is what I say.
Can I offer some language, up to five? No.
There you go, because we could just have one.
There you go, you never can't tell.
Okay.
Okay. I think they have a process.
Yeah, that's good. Three to five. It'll get, it'll probably, it might not even get that far.
Are we going to bring this back for additional discussion?
I think we're good. We've made a decision, right?
And-
We've set a process.
One, one question. We, we've eliminated the board participation, board member participation-
How about if we-
In the screening process, right?
How about if we let Shirley go ahead and recap it?
Okay.
That's, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. What we have is that it will be both external and internal recruitment. We will not use a professional recruiting firm. HR will do the, handle the recruiting. The paper screening will be done by HR and admin, with any qualified applicants moving on to the committee, interview committee for ranking. The interview committee will be made up of sheriff's office or command staff that have no conflict of interest, but will be from a county similar to Calaveras County. And the, the top three to five candidates that are ranked in that interview committee will be forwarded to the board for a public meeting and interview process.
Roger that.
Okay, and if we need more than one meeting, we can do that, but, okay, is that all right with everybody?
Would we be able to, like, write up a statement that says that to put on the website, so everybody would know what's going on?
We can, we'll be putting together a recruitment flyer with, and with the dates and times.
But if you, if you- But if you, if you could put on, like, maybe our information officer could, I don't know, that's not due fire, but maybe you could, you know, just HR, somebody that, just so it's on the website, so anybody who wants to try to know what happened here can go there, click on it.
If you can do that, then we can also attach it to whatever, you know, we put out to.
We will get something out.
That'd be great, thanks.
We could always talk Charlie into the interview team.
Now, can I ask a question?
He's qualified, actually.
Is there any process or procedure that the board or public could say, or look into, without relating personal details, those folks not making the elimination? In other words, how do we handle inquiries from the public who said, well, what happened to this guy? How do we handle that, because you know that's gonna happen?
Well, that, that in a personnel sense is private.
Personal question.
Yeah, that is very sensitive.
The cool thing about that is HR gets to handle it.
I would simply say that the top three candidates, X, Y, Z, are top, top five candidates, were, were forwarded to the board, and they can make whatever assumptions they want.
We have a procedure for that, then, that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with it. I'm good with this, okay.
I don't think there's any gray area.
All right, so, yeah, let's do public comment again.
Okay. Have we done it once?
Yeah, we've already done public comment on this, on this agenda item, but it's in the discretion of the chair if you want to do an additional public comment.
Are these decisions being made by a resolution? Are you making a motion and seconding it, and that's how you're deciding this?
Guidance for the board.
The board, the board provided direction to staff on how to move forward, and it was direction by polling of the board on, with a majority on each item.
So, there's not, that's not a question, okay? Have you all heard the term beaten a dead horse? This feels like it, I feel like I'm the horse back there. I'm exhausted. When you all came back from a break, there was a piece of paper distributed, and I think the public may want to know what that was.
That's what I read.
That's what I read.
Oh.
You want it?
I, I, yeah, because it takes me a while to-
When you get warm.
We've been three months without a sheriff. We want one. There was a question about layoff, that that, if somebody was laid off, they would be bumped in. I recall when Gary Kuntz was laid off before he was elected sheriff, he was just out free lancing around, and I'm wondering, because I heard at the time, it was, the layoff was caused by budgetary, and then I also heard it was caused by personnel. So, I'm wondering how that process fits into what you all are talking about. If somebody ran for office and didn't win, then they would be out. They would also have the option to reapply to any positions that would be available in the sheriff.
So, we don't have confusion, Bonnie, can I just break in just for a second?
Yes.
So, if somebody is a candidate here, and they're applying, all right, they're not gonna lose their job. The only time they would lose that right to have that job is if they actually got the sheriff's position, okay?
Yes.
After that, they're giving up their job to be sheriff. They've decided that they're gonna run again in the future.
Or retire.
Or retire.
And the reason why I ask the question, you may have a law enforcement person that is 12 years into their career. They step up to the plate, and they do the county a three-year favor. They have no intention of running for office, they just did this because that's what law enforcement does every day. They have no guarantee they can go back to being a sergeant, lieutenant, or a captain.
Gotcha.
And the other thing is, is if they're, if they are, you know, 12 years into it, and they do take the appointment, and they go for the election after that, and they lose, they're done. So, that's a consideration that they need to make when they, a conscious decision they need to make when they, when they take this step. We just want to make sure that it's fully understandable.
Well, hopefully, the person that would fill in would do such an outstanding job, there wouldn't be any question about a reelection, so, I'm gonna put my glasses on. Stuff written all over here. Oh, I think you answered it when we talked about the interview process, and the, the, the exposure of background information that may not be appropriate for people to know about.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Finally, what do you think the timeframe may be in this selection process? And what do you think the cost is gonna be to conduct this process that we're talking about? Because I'm always looking at the bottom line, I'm trying to scramble around, grovel in the dirt for any funds for other positions.
Yeah, you know, we just came up with a process this afternoon, so, I mean, maybe we can try to give it a best estimate next-by-next meeting, but it'd be pretty impossible to try to figure that one out right now.
I like the idea of keeping it simple, because then the costs are down, and it's minimal, and less exposure for people to have public scrutiny when it's not necessary, because everyone's, you know, a judge at some point, you know, in our own minds, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm from Calaveras, Kansas Lions, just some clarification on the process, it might have been said, I might have missed it. So, things will go to this interview committee, they will send you three to five candidates, and then my understanding is that you guys will then interview those candidates in a public meeting in this sort of setting, is that correct? During that public meeting, I think it will be a public comment. My question is, will we, the public, be able to ask questions of the candidates, or only speak to you guys?
Good question.
Counsel?
I think the main purpose, and, and this is something with, that I would want to discuss with David Serius in my office, since he handles all personnel matters for, for the county, is typically when you do an interview, there, there are set questions for all candidates. So, one, one candidate isn't asked one specific question, and, and the other candidates have a different set of questions. I would imagine that if a question is posed to all of the candidates, that that might be something that could be explored, but it has to be universally applied. That would, I, I would just ask that, I would update the board if that, if I did some research and, and that was not a possibility.
So, we can answer that actually on the ninth?
Okay, and just so the board is aware, I will not be here on the ninth, but I will actually have my assistant county council here on the ninth.
So, it's a possibility, gotta check out some things, and you'll let us know on the ninth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have time for that still, thank you, that's a good question, thank you.
And just something else for the board to consider is, if you want to get public input on specific questions to ask, you can always say, you know, anybody of the public who would like certain questions asked, present the questions in advance for, for staff to consider and implement in crafting the overall questions to be asked by all of the-
I think that'd probably be the best process, counsel, and- I mean, we, you know, I've been to candidates forums where people write down a question, they hand it up, and then it, it gets asked to all of the candidates, and it goes pretty smoothly, actually.
And I think the, the procedure of having the public personally interview the candidates, that's what elections are for.
Be quite honest with you. This is, wouldn't be, would this be, that's part of the process we're gonna figure out.
Right.
Yeah, but we know that we can move forward, we got time to, to, you know, vet that one. I, I, actually, good questions.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, huh?
Sure, no, that's very good points, and that changes my, my concerns that I, I had. If we had five candidates come to a public forum that have been vetted by retired sheriffs and such, and you have the ranking as to their desirability, they would be coming with their background information, I assume, so that-
We don't have to see it.
Okay, can, can, can their background be concealed?
We don't have to see it, once, once they get to that point, we don't need it.
Just so the board is aware, anybody who comes to the board, who was interviewed by the board, their documentation is public. Anybody who does not make it through that first cut-
Does it get seen?
Correct.
Okay.
So, anybody who is presented to the board for the public session, their application and their documentation is a public, is public information.
Okay, if, if this, this committee is able to, to suggest what, who the best candidate would be and the next runner-up, I wonder if it might be expedient to just do one and maybe a backup rather than five, because of the, the, the vetting process and the public is different than what would occur under professionals that are familiar with the job. And so, that process may be counterproductive. If the public is, is trusting you to make these decisions and appoint a, a new sheriff, and you've come across a very good process of doing it by using expert people in the field to really vet, the process after that doesn't have to be a big public ceremony, giving the idea that the public is electing a sheriff, because that, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense, because the vetting has been done before. So, basically, you're reviewing the top candidate, and maybe the second one, if there's some problem with the first one. Doesn't, doesn't that make more sense than to have five people up here, like you're doing the candidates night? With the pretty questions?
Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. At the risk of insulting anyone here, which I certainly would never want to do, for those of us who are old enough to remember, it kind of resembles the construction of a Rube Goldberg machine, where we have committees selecting committees, and things scattered out over here and all around the place. I agree with the supervisors who say, this is your job, and you should just do it. I, I don't see any risk to that, other than if you want to have someplace to throw blame afterwards, in case it goes bad. As far as background checks, you know, this should be handled like an election, lots of crooks and ne'er-do-wills get elected. We don't worry about background checks when people are running for office. And the, the one thing that, that bothers me about the public interview is, it's, it's great to have questions, but rather than have this chaotic scene where people want their questions to be asked to the candidates and hear the answer, maybe they would submit the questions to the board. You would select the questions and ask them on behalf of the public. Then that way, no one's upset that their question didn't get asked, or anything else, or they didn't have time, and you can make sure that the pressure, the questions are appropriate, not redundant, and you're still getting public input. What I'm afraid of is, if, if you leave it open to the public to ask questions, how does their reaction to the answer equate back to direction to the board? I mean, unless you have, like, an applause-o-meter and go over each one's head to see which, what the crowd liked the best, how does that information get back to the board? It doesn't. So, just let the public participate by submitting questions, you ask them. When it gets down to the getting down, there's no one else in this world that's gonna make, make the decision, other than you five. And the sooner you get after it, the better, because this county is without a sheriff. And we need the guidance, and we need that political entity guiding the sheriff's department now. And I, I think we're extremely fortunate to have the candidates that we do. And I don't, I don't think you can make a bad decision. So, if you're worried about that, I'd, I'd set that aside. And let's just get on with getting a sheriff, and moving on with the rest of the business of the county. It's not like we don't have anything else to do, so, that's just my opinion, so, thank you.
When we interview a, like, a department head, Bill, we can't just go in with all the questions that each supervisor wants to ask. We actually have a canned group of questions. So, I'm concerned about using the public's, I mean, trust me, I got no problem with questions the public may have, but I don't know that legally we can do that without making sure that every person sticks to the script.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that before, or by our next meeting, we'll have that discussion.
But I think you need, you deserve to get an answer to that question.
Sorry.
And I, I think that that's why Mr. McManus had indicated having the public submit their questions, and then those questions can be vetted, and to determine which questions to, are the most well-rounded to cover all the bases. That would be, that would be up to the board, who would ultimately want to vet that. But I would ask that, of course, our office would be involved in that.
Who's gonna vet them?
Probably.
We can.
The, the board as a whole would have to vet those in open public session.
Would that be done in the public forum?
It has to be.
The questions, yes, but again, I would ask that anything that was ultimately decided on would be vetted through our office for legal concerns and constraints.
Not as easy as it sounded, is it?
It's never as easy as it sounded. I, I just wanted to say, as the guy that's, that's been pushing for the public to get a chance to ask questions, actually, I should probably note this, it's like 3:05 on January 12th, I don't have a problem with what Mr. McManus said. I think that if the, if you guys need to vet, if we need to submit questions to you, and you vet them for redundancy in something, I think that's fine. I just think the public should have a chance, and I understand not wanting to turn it into a circus. So, if, if we submit those and have to be orderly, I think that's okay, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
I just wanted to say that ultimately, I think the board of supervisors should be picking the, the new sheriff, and not have the vetting committee bring forward one person for you, or maybe two people for you to, for you to look over, I think you need to look over more, as Debbie and some others said, you know, more than, more than one.
Any other public comments?
Rick DiBussolo, potential candidate, wasn't likely a candidate. I just want the board to be very aware that if you're gonna use, which you are, it sounds like you're gonna use outside entities, sheriffs to interview us, that's fine, but you need to understand, they don't know us. This is a very public position, as you all know, as your position is. They don't have that insight as to the public committee, uh, com- public perception of each individual person, or the community involvement that each individual person has within this community. So, you, you guys need to be very aware of that, I know you are, I just, I, I need to tell you that, because you're gonna have three people sitting here, or, or five people telling you, I thought it was three that were gonna be telling you.
No, 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 oh, you're talking about the-
I'm not talking about the five candidates, I'm talking about the three folks that you're gonna have as a panel are gonna be telling you what their recommendations are.
Right.
Their recommendations are gonna be what they see on paper, their recommendations are not gonna be see the whole person. I just want to be aware of that.
Correct.
But interviews don't relay the public perception or the community outreach that I have, or that Ed may have, or anybody else may have.
Right, their, their relationship with the community.
And is it, because it's a very relationship-driven position. Think about it, it's a popularity contest when you get elected in. It's how you perceive the person that you're electing. You, you look at the presidential election, you're looking at the people for what you see, and how they perceive themselves to the public. This is the same type of position, and those three board panel people are not gonna see that. I just want the board to be aware of it.
Any other public comments? Okay, so, Mr. McManus, the, the reason that I think that- Okay, so, Mr. McManus, the reason that I think that it's important to have some questions to the, from the public, it's not because of us looking at the applause-o-meter, what public, necessarily what the public perception is. But some of these questions are going to create a reaction by whoever's answering it, and that's kind of what I'm interested in. How do they answer some of the questions and how they react to them? That's, to me, is all important as well because when they're out in the public and they're talking with people and they're interacting with our citizens, I think it's important for me to know that they're going to be able to interact with them in a way that is acceptable. So, that's kind of important, too. All right, so, we're finished with this?
Can I respond to your comments?
No, we're... Can you wait until the ninth, please?
Sorry, what?
Can you wait till the ninth? We're kind of finished right now with this. You know, go ahead. Go ahead. Come on. Come on up and respond. So, are we finished?
Come on, let's have some more. It's so interesting.
I'm dumb. All right. So, we're clear on the process, right? True?
I think we have it down.
All right. Good. So, we're going to go now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine, non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Seven is minutes of the board of supervisors' regular meeting, January 5th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. So, and then, was anybody, does anybody wish, in the public, wished to pull a consent agenda item? Number 11. Okay. Anybody else? Peter?
I'm going to follow, please.
You know, I already had your name marked on that one, Peter. And anybody else? Okay, so, can I have a motion on the remainder?
Some moved.
Can I have a second, please? Second. Go ahead.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Kearney for the remainder of the consent agenda. 11 and 12 were pulled. All this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. All right, Bonnie?
Just very quickly, this $152,000, is that coming out of the general fund or is there a special other place? And is that money being reimbursed? Well, is it coming out of the general fund?
It's coming out of the Butte Fire Fund.
Okay, so, it's...
So, we expect to be reimbursed through FEMA and this state. Six and a quarter percent will be county share unless we can get that amount waived.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Board comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion by Supervisor Ponte. Second, please.
Second?
Second by Supervisor Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's by itself. All right, Peter. Number 12, please.
A couple of quickie questions. It says financing. No impact associated with approval of this item, but I would like to know more about this agency. It's also said it's, do you folks know who's been approved and who isn't? And you know anybody, you know the list of names that you're approving? It's not listed here. I just wonder, do the rest of the board knows all the folks? Because you have consumers, childcare providers, public agency representatives, community representatives, and at the discretion of board supervisors, CSS, 20%. I presume one of the elected officials is a public agency? And who's the consumers? What kind of money are we looking at to these consumers? Who's paying for the consumers? I mean, it's nice that it's no budget effect approving this, but who are you approving? What you're approving? These folks going to be handling what? Are they on their tax money? Is that a volunteer program? Is it federal, state money? And who decided who's going to... Who's the consumers and who's the public? Who's the public representatives? There's no names, no identification. What kind of money are we looking at? Thank you. I just wondered how much you guys know about it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, it's not in the board packet because it's pretty specific.
That's not the board packet. No, the list is actually on the board, is on the board agenda item of the members. It's Mary Sawicki, Director of Health and Human Services.
It's not in here. That's why I'm asking a question. Thank you.
Be more than happy to give you my copy.
Oh, you're wonderful. Thank you.
Of who the members are and what are the questions?
Well, first of all, I wanted to know who's and how they got on there? Who appointed them? Are they elected? And what is the source of the money?
Okay, the money for the childcare council, well, actually, for childcare in Calaveras County is, part of it is public welfare benefits for people who are going to school or working, and that is federal and state funds. The other portion comes from the Department of Education because they also have funds for childcare as well. And our childcare council is run by the Resource Connection, has been for a good number of years. And I'll let Kelly Gresh answer. Any further questions you may have?
So, it's for childcare and it's a joint with the Calaveras Office of Education and Resource Connection, and it is taxpayer dollars put to good use for childcare. And there's a number of community members and a number of other, I don't want to say county staff or not, but the board is pretty evenly distributed between consumers and staff and consumers, I said, childcare providers, et cetera.
Yeah, the definitions are on your membership roster. And you've got it. What Mary said is basically what it is.
Great. And there's some good people on there.
There are some excellent members on the childcare council.
And it's a great service for our community.
It says in the notation, "Who appoints the particular member?" Correct. I'm asking a rhetorical question. BOs, the board of supervisors, we pointed that. And Calaveras County Office of Education, right? I think that's what Peter was asking, who appointed them?
Yes, so 50% is appointed by the board of supervisors and 50% by the county superintendent of schools. Does that answer your question?
I'll make a motion to approve. Any other public comments?
The childcare council receives...
That's not what we're doing today, though. I think what we're doing today is appointing the membership, correct? We're not reviewing budgetary items or programs or anything?
Yeah, there's no...
There's no financial impact associated. Today, it's just the membership.
Appointing the membership.
And we have really great people on there, Peter. Great people.
Do you know the number of people you appointed?
I know who they are.
Okay.
Yes. I think there's only one person on here that I'm not familiar with, but the rest of them, I am. So, are you okay? Public comments? Can I have a motion by the board, please?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Supervisor Ponte.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I make just one comment, please, on number 13? I know that we approved it already, but this is a resolution, just for the public's information, that we're working with, together with CPUD in our water district, currently on a moratorium. And so, our board here just approved a request, a resolution to request that the state drops that moratorium so that we can recover from the, so we can get some water connections going in this area to recover from the Butte Fire. So, I asked Shirley and Donna Leatherman with CPUD has been working out the particulars, and Shirley came up with the resolution. And so, now, this is kind of an important document that we, that they can take with them to the state for this, so.
And we understand that the State Water Resources Board is reconsidering the moratorium, so that's good news as well.
Yeah, so, it just adds a little bit of positiveness to it. So, thank you very much. I guess we're at the supervisors' announcements?
Last, after last Tuesday's board meeting, I had a CSA1 road committee meeting, and there was not a quorum, so said hello and goodbye. And last Friday, I attended a Commission on Agent meeting. I was very insightful. There should be some other announcements I have regarding it coming up, but other than being there today, that's all I can tell you.
Debbie?
I want to make notes. I was approached by a gentleman by the name of John Kramer, who works for Condor Earth Technologies. And through his efforts and some other folks, they are bringing in a gentleman by the name of Dr. Ty Fera, if I pronounced that correctly. There was a flyer at your board.
Yeah, I've seen that.
So, I just want to make note of this, that he is going to be here for a two-day visit. And his first visit will be giving a presentation at Columbia College. It's in regard to water said stewardship, kind of practical decisions for good policy from sound science. And he travels quite a bit about this particular topic matter and currently is at University of Arizona. And Columbia College and Condor Earth are sponsoring his visit here. Going to be at Columbia College on February 11th. Mr. Kramer worked with me and had asked if I could assist him in a location for a community presentation for various stakeholders. You know, government officials, general public, land management, users, fire victims, water and land management, ranchers, et cetera. And so, we've reserved the Bret Hart High School multipurpose room for February 11th from 7:00 to 8:30. We're also going to have him speak to high school students in regards to possible career development, and he'll be doing the same at Columbia College. So, he'll be here February 11th and 12th. But I ask that you keep this meeting in consideration and help spread the word and post it in your various districts, et cetera. The other thing I want to make mention of and just FYI, as I understand it, the next LAFCO meeting is Monday, January 25th at 6:00 p.m. And there's going to be a study session of sorts or public hearing of sorts in regards to the variety of the CSAs. And I'm hopeful that notification went out to the individual CSAs as I got a number of concerns from my district in regards to notification and what was in the report, the report's acceptance, and want an opportunity to comment. So, I've been encouraging members of my CSAs within District 4 to attend. And it is posted on the LAFCO website, as well as I know that information is out in the community about that particular public meeting for folks to respond to. So, I'd also just like to note, you know, last meeting was kind of tough, and I know we made a variety of committee assignments, but I would like the board to consider maybe looking at the variety of committee assignments that were made. I find it to be very top-heavy, and perhaps I'm not doing as much as I should be doing compared to my colleagues. I have the least number of committee assignments, so I just want to let my colleagues know that you might look at the various committees that you're serving on, and if you no longer have a desire to serve for whatever reason, perhaps I could be considered for those assignments.
Fair enough.
That's all I have.
Thanks for bringing that up.
On the 7th, I attended the Murphy's Business Association breakfast meeting. Discussed what some of the issues were in Murphy's regarding their business events for the schedule. We have Murphy's Irish Days coming up. We will be attending that particular meeting on the 13th. That's a special coordinating meeting for Irish Days to the Murphy's Business folks. Attended the Arnold Library monthly meeting. Got some very good information and passed condolences on to the folks that apparently their treasury passed away. And also, retirement of our librarian for the county. We acknowledge that. The same night, I attended the Highway 4 Water Meeting in Murphy's and was a very constructive meeting. In that meeting, it was related that they need to provide their resources for the county. We talked about communications. We talked about the fire response, some of the problems we had in communications, some of the problems we experienced, some of the things we did good. And as a group, they stepped forward and said, "If there's anything they can do, just ask," using their existing towers of utilities, districts, things of that sort, for temporary transmission, antennas, things of that thing. On the... Yesterday, I did attend the Governor's Task Force for Tree Mutuality with Supervisor Wright. We picked up a lot of good information. They are in their work groups now. They've established those. They're in the process of seeking funding for the various different projects. Once again, it's limited right now to the six counties. Calaveras is not one of those counties. But as they get the six-county pilot program up, Calaveras will be subject to being included in that particular program. They're looking, getting resources for the removal of trees, the disposition of trees, and after-use marketing of the byproducts, realizing that we have a very serious problem. We have to address that immediately. And that was stressed in the meeting. I mean, they were talking monthly meetings in these various committees, and from the governor's office, it says, "We don't have months. We don't have that kind of time. We need to do it daily." So, they're moving their schedules up. They're really attacking this problem. I will be attending... We did have a date for a helicopter tour with PG&E of our tree problem, which was canceled due to weather. That's about it.
So, on the 12th, I had an interview with PEG TV, our closed-circuit TV, and they mostly wanted to talk about the fire. It's only a half-hour interview, so I guess it turned out pretty good. You know, I just explained how we reacted and we did the best, you know, how we worked. I actually thought that we did a very good job, so. On the 7th, I attended a Valley Springs Booster meeting with Supervisor Kearney, and that's for the fireworks on the 4th of July at Hogan Lake. And so, they're going to do a crab feed, which is sold out in about a week. And that was amazing. And so, that, and then, on the 9th, the American Legion Force 102 had a crab feed down in Valley Springs at the vet's hall, and we attended that. First one of the year for us. It was, I guess it was a good start to a very long crab season because I, you know, I ate a lot of crab there, but there's going to be a lot more coming in, I'm pretty sure, since there's like six more on the horizon. But anyhow, so, they, it was a good fundraiser for them. They had some really great raffle prizes. It was a fun event. Supervisor Kearney was there as well, and I think I ate more than anybody. And then, last night at Ironstone, they had the Chamber of Commerce did the Butte Fire Recovery Business Forum. And then last night, at Ironstone, they had the Chamber of Commerce did the Butte Fire Recovery Business Forum. Pretty, a pretty lightly attended event, but it was nice. Ironstone did a great job. Their food was fantastic. They had just some snacks and stuff there, but it was really good. And we got to talk to all the FEMA's and the OESs were there, and then SBA and, and all of the entities that could help folks. There's lots of help out there for, for people if they would just reach out to them. But you have, you know, you, you need to sign up if you're gonna receive help. And there's a lot of people that are just willing to do that, and especially for the small businesses. And that's all I have. Anything from staff?
Yeah, a couple of things. As you're probably aware, the budget, the governor released his budget on Thursday. We are going through and looking at it. The summary that's put out by the governor's office was over 257 pages, not including the appendices. But we also received information of analysis from CSAC, RCRC, Captain Macedo Ford, the Sheriff's Association, CWDA. So there's a lot of information that we'll be going through.
The House Office.
Yes, both, um, Senator Bigelow and Senator Perry House Offices. We know that overall, the, the budget is looking good, that there's expected to be little impact to county programs, which is always good to hear. We also know that there is a, our line items in there for Lake and Butte County, 1.9 million for property tax relief. However, we don't know, and everything I've looked at so far, there's no clear definition of how much per county. Also, the other's offices express concerns because that is less than what both Lake County and Calaveras County has submitted to their respective legislators for relief. But we still have may revise coming up, and the fact that we have a line item in the budget is a really good thing. The other thing I wanted to ask the board for direction on is that an email was forwarded to our office with a follow-up phone call from a gentleman named Jay Ron, who is interested in doing a presentation to the board on the state of Jefferson. My understanding that it could be an hour to an hour and a half presentation. I'm not sure whether or not the board is interested. And if they are, would they want somebody also hear from the other side of the, the different perspective, the other side of the issue, to also present their side? Or do they just want to hear the presentation from this gentleman regarding the state of Jefferson?
I would just say let him make his presentation. I, I wouldn't turn it into a debate. There's enough of that going on around the subject. When people come and make other presentations, we don't bring in, you know, opposite to make comments. That's my opinion.
I have some concern about the length of it, hour, hour and a half.
That was what he relayed to Karen, Karen Osborne, in our office. I don't know the extent, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to him myself, but I wanted to find out first whether or not the majority of the board are interested in hearing a presentation on the state of Jefferson.
I guess I have mixed feelings. I'm, you know, have been invited to a number of presentations, and they haven't worked within my schedule to, to do so. I'm not sure if this board would be taking a position or being asked to take a position on this particular subject matter. So I, I don't know. I don't know, I'm, as I heard that requests might be coming forward, I didn't know if this would make for an evening meeting, which is our first one is in March. Or is that too far out for this kind of presentation? I know there was a march and, and, you know, paperwork was submitted at the Capitol. And, you know, I don't know what the correct terminology is, but anyway, some sort of declaration that Calaveras County was interested. So I, I don't know if this is something that this board takes a position on one way or the other and endorses it or not. I just, I'm unclear if that's our role.
He, um, there was no indication that I, in the email about the timing. I know we have a couple of big items that are going to take, items that are going to take quite a bit of time in the, over the next few meetings, so it is unlikely that it would be before March. It would probably be more likely sometime in March.
It's only three meetings away.
Well, I've been given this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm interested in finding out anything about, anything, really. If it's a presentation that's not gonna be acted upon by the board, it's just gonna be a presentation, right?
That's my understanding.
So, we wouldn't commit to anything. We could choose to just bring it on, put it on an agenda item to commit if, after the presentation, that we feel that we want to. But I can't see a harm in just learning more. It's not gonna go away, so.
Well, I would be interested in a March evening meeting, and, you know, I would say keep the presentation to thirty minutes.
There'd be more people could show up.
I think an abbreviated presentation.
Not an hour and a half.
That, that's what he, he mentioned to Karen. We will make sure that the, it's a more abbreviated presentation. And so what I'm hearing then is the evening meeting of, in March.
What day is that?
Thirty minutes.
Twenty-ninth, I think, on a Tuesday.
And that's all I have.
How's the board feel, okay? Good time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot of steam behind the movement, but honestly, I'm not well-schooled on it.
Well, if we get our opportunity, it's a good. What was that first, you were talking about there?
The budget, state budget.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to mention something about that. That morning, that the, the governor, I just wanted to let you all know that the same morning the governor, the governor passed that budget, Bigelow was, at nine o'clock in the morning, was on the phone to let us know that Calaveras County was specifically mentioned in the state Capitol for the Butte Fire. And, and, you know, that doesn't ever happen, he told me. He says, so, so it's kind of a, at least we're on the radar, and I feel good about that.
We'll take all the help we can get.
All right.
On the couch?
The only thing that I have report, to report out is, as I indicated earlier, I am not gonna be here on the February ninth meeting. As most of you know, I didn't take all of my maternity leave at the front end. So I'm stretching, taking small bits, so I'll be gone for a week here or two weeks there from here until July. I'll make sure that the board knows in advance when. I've already put my time in with the state, so I already know when I'm, I'm gonna be out. So I will make sure that the board knows long in advance when I'm, when I'm not gonna be in. But it should only be a two-week increment or a, a week and a half increment, so there won't be as large of an impact on my office as taking a, a large chunk like I did at the beginning.
Hurry up, baby's gonna be in school.
You have until the first, until the first year.
Megan, well, David or Julie?
Yes.
David be here?
Uh, one, it will likely be David on the ninth.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Okay, it's, uh, public comments.
I'm not used to you being here this late, Peter, I'm sorry.
I, I was so quiet and so good, you know? Somebody should throw me a bone or something. State of Jefferson, there was supposed to be a meeting down in General Inn, but the only time we had was between Christmas and New Year's, there's like three days. So they got canceled. The firefighters in General Inn have the place, and we're gonna be doing it the next, what, in a month? You're more than welcome to come. It's gonna be enough publicity on it, that's one thing, okay? And then you can still do your thing in March. The rally in Sacramento got canceled because I was a macho enough to go in there, wind and cold and rain. It was Monday or Tuesday, so I just chickened out, but a whole bunch of us in here. The other thing that if you want to see something that's educational, that I find it's very helpful, learn something most people don't know enough about it, is water rights. CCWD had this organization come out, I don't know if anyone was there, but it was very, very educational what water rights people have and where and so on, okay? So, that you might want to consider, because it's, water in this county is worth more than gold or silver. So that I would recommend that you might want to consider, Donald.
It's, it's worth more than gold and silver in the state, not in this county.
Okay, the whole thing, okay? So, that was one more thing. Don't get old, folks. Don't get old. There was one more. Oh, by the way, I, um, not that you're concerned about, but the head honcho for Cal Fire is busted. He got indicted, it's going down. Okay, just so you might know.
He was here?
The head honcho?
The Cal Fire, yes.
State director, he was here, not, not the regional chief?
I don't remember all the details.
There was three up here, right?
I, I wouldn't discuss anything of that nature, it's not on the agenda.
Of course, it was, it was, that you were...
Good man, thank you, Peter.
Right, meeting adjourned.